Good morning. It is nine o'clock. We will go ahead and call our meeting to order. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. This meeting will be conducted in compliance with Nebraska's open meeting laws, a copy of which is on the back wall. Good morning, Mr. Esch. Could you please call the roll?
Well, I'll have to talk loudly. My mic's not working, apparently.
Oh, is it not?
Yeah, so. Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan. I messed up the order. Commissioner Rogers.
Just so people know, the Building Commission has ordered the new voting and mic system and all. Finally, we finally came to agreement with the city on what we wanted, but it's going to take a while to get it in. Do you remember the timeframe, Mike, for how long it's going to take?
Ninety days.
All right. Okay, thank you. All right, we will start with the Board of Equalization. The first item for consideration is the minutes from last week's meeting, and then we would set a meeting for January 28th for our next meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle and Kraft to approve A and B. Any questions or comments? Could we please have the vote?
Commissioner Boyle's vote won't appear on the screen, but he does vote yes, as do the rest of the commissioners. Motion passes.
Thank you. Citizen comments? Anybody wish to address the Board of Equalization on anything not on the agenda? If not, we have Resolutions D through H. I do not believe we have any need for executive session for the BOE this morning. Motion, motion on the second to approve Resolutions D through H and adjourned from the Board of Equalization. Questions or comments?
Just one on, just to make a disclosure on IMG, I'm on the board for the Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership, and they have two vehicles on this list.
Thank you. You had pointed that out to me ahead of time, and I forgot. I appreciate the reminder. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, could we please vote?
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We will now call to order the Board of Corrections. Could we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Thank you. First item is the approval of the minutes from the December 10th meeting. Okay, any questions or comments? Could we please have the vote? Those commissioners, Rogers and Kraft.
I was just going to note that I, I'll get this ordered, this new order down, but I forgot to call Commissioner Rogers in attendance here, so. Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Kraft votes yes. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Report from, oh, citizen comments. Anybody wish to address the Board of Corrections on anything not on the agenda? If not, good morning, Amber.
Good morning. Amber Redman, Deputy Director of Corrections. Director Myers is actually on his way back from a jail conference today, so you guys get me. I apologize in advance if I sound a little bit winded. Baby is not leaving much room for me. Taking a look at enclosure number one, following the sixth month of the fiscal year, we are over budget by just over $235,000. This really didn't come as a surprise to us with the resolution of the latest FOP contract. Not only did our officers receive a pay increase, but they also received a retro payment since we were nearly a year and a half into the contract by the time it was signed into resolution. Also, not unusual for this time of year, our overtime costs and hours worked rose a very modest amount compared to the previous month, but remained well below the trend for the rest of the year. The increase in December can largely be attributed to a push to complete mandatory recertification training for our officers prior to the end of the calendar year. There are mandatory training hours that we need to try and accomplish every year, and we tried to, we do everything we could to squeeze that in before the end of the calendar year, which kind of drove our overtime costs up in December. During December, there were just over 8,000 hours of overtime worked. By comparison, there was 10,900 and 11,500, 7,400 hours in the previous three months. Moving on to enclosure number two, community corrections. There were 17 individuals serving a combined 73 days in the sanction center. That is just down a little bit from last month. 25 individuals served a combined total of 158 days in the transitional discharge center. Yeah, does that help? Is that better?
Thank you.
Okay. I'm a little further away from the podium these days, too. Just mentioning that there were 25 individuals serving a combined total of 158 days in the transitional discharge center. Those numbers were about the same as last month. Several other noteworthy and exciting initiatives worth mentioning within the community corrections enclosure. Rehabilitative Services Administrator Justine Wall led a discussion held at the Heartland Family, or, excuse me, Heartland Workforce Solutions with nearly 50 professionals from several different agencies. The purpose of the event was to discuss service gaps and ways to address them for justice-involved individuals. There are additional planning meetings on that forthcoming. Justine is present today and can kind of elaborate on that if you guys do want to hear more about that or have any questions about that initiative. Douglas County is under consideration by the Access to Justice Lab of Harvard University for a research project relating to bail and pretrial release. A representative from Harvard will travel to Douglas County in late January to meet with various stakeholders to discuss the feasibility of conducting the study here. I do know Director Myers has sent some information out about that to stakeholders already. If you haven't received that and you're interested in hearing more about that or being involved in that meeting, just let me know, and I'll make sure that gets to him. Douglas County Corrections also submitted an application to participate in a pilot project to implement the public safety assessment, a new pretrial, a pretrial release risk assessment instrument. Again, Justine can elaborate on that if you guys have any questions here at the end of the report. Moving on to the 24/7 sobriety program, we had 89 admissions, and the total population on the program surpassed 350 people for the first time ever. As we were kind of preparing this report, Mike, Justine, and I spent some time chatting about this topic. Our conversation noted the number of participants on the program, and, you know, we couldn't help but wonder where our jail population would be today had this program not been implemented a handful of years ago. It is hard to identify where those participants would be today. You know, this is a reminder that those participants are not in our jail, yet the population just yesterday was still over 1,300. So, there's no way to know for sure. We do speculate that the program has successfully helped some people get released from jail and allows us to monitor them outside of jail, but we also assume that there are handful, more than a handful, number of participants on this program that would have been released prior to the launch of this program, and we now have the ability to supervise them in ways that we didn't have before. The breath test compliance and success rate of both breath testing and SCRAM continues to remain high. Moving on to the pretrial services section, there is an item there I want to follow up on. It mentions that 25 individuals were referred for priority prosecution, resulting in 646 bed days saved. That seems a little high to me. In comparison, last month, there were 23 individuals saving 85 bed days, so that bed day savings seems high. I will follow up on that number to ensure that it's correct. Moving on to enclosure number four for personnel, we did graduate 13 new officers from the Training Academy on January 3rd, and they will complete the field training, portion of their training this Friday, January 17th, and then they will be on their own. And the hiring committee is continuing to work on building the next class. Director Myers and I did decide to push the start date of that class back just a bit. We were aiming to try and start that class in January, towards the end of January, but the class is compiling a little bit slower than we had anticipated. Also, not a surprise, we knew the holiday would kind of slow things down when it comes to the hiring process, and at the unprecedented rate that we've been doing our hiring, we expected a time where our class would kind of slow down. So, we've pushed that date back to February 10th, just a couple of weeks, in order to kind of get a more significant number of officers into the next new hire training class. Attrition was not bad during the month of December. We only lost three officers, all below the rank of sergeant. We had a net gain of 11 custody staff throughout the officer ranks during December, helped us conclude the month and the calendar year at 364 of our authorized 396 officers. So, we are getting closer to our goal, but clearly there's still some work to do. Moving on to enclosure five, the population, only noting there that our average daily population is up slightly from last month. It was 1,253 last month. It's 1,267 this month. We have seen an increase in our inmate population in the last couple of weeks. Noting that the U.S. Marshal population has remained stable. It's always disappointing to them, but we have reached out to them again and asked them to move some of the inmates in their custody out of our facility. I just mentioned our count has remained high, and we've seen their numbers kind of creep up in the last couple of months, so we have asked that they move some individuals out of our facility due to our high count. Enclosure number six for medical. Probably the most noteworthy item there is that, we've always tracked this, but we have started our prep work for the 2021 fiscal year. It's another item we've been trying to get a jumpstart on with my pending leave, and what that's done is it's kind of started a conversation about the amount of staff hours spent on supervising inmates who receive off-site outpatient and inpatient medical care. It was a surprisingly high amount when we pulled those numbers. We found that in 2019, Corrections expended over 15,000 hours of officer time manning individuals in outpatient or inpatient medical care. So, that really represents seven and a half full-time officer positions, and that does not include the thousand of hours that we spend within the facility supervising our highest-risk individuals on a one-on-one basis. You've heard Director Myers talk about this in previous reports. We have some individuals that we're so concerned about in our custody that we staff an officer on them to monitor them directly one-on-one, so that's not accounted for in the 15,000 hours of off-site time that we pulled. So, it really is safe to say that we could operate two additional housing units with the resources expended on our medically fragile and high-risk inmates. Just another example of the stress placed on the criminal justice system when individuals are not receiving adequate medical and mental health care in the community. Concluding the report with the other noteworthy items happening at the jail, we have diligently responded to our first outbreak of influenza in the jail for at least probably the last decade, when none of us could remember an outbreak that we have experienced this year. To date, nearly 40 cases have been identified. The unbelievable news is that just yesterday we cleared our last active case of the flu, so as long as there were no new temperatures found this morning, we are flu-free at the moment. So, we have to give a tremendous amount of credit to our staff that did an outstanding job of containing what could have been a very serious situation for us at the jail. We did find that two-thirds of the cases occurred within the first week of that outbreak, and then we only had sporadic cases after we began to address and kind of quarantine and clean and contain that as much as we could. During that time, we also worked hand-in-hand with the Douglas County Health Department, so we'd like to thank them for providing their expertise in additional vaccinations for our staff and inmates, which have been crucial to our success in working through this ongoing challenge. I should correct that. The Health Department provided vaccinations for our staff. The Medical Department purchased additional vaccinations for the inmates. Director Myers also mentioned last month that we've started our strategic planning process down at the jail. Our efforts to develop that are ongoing. We do hope to publish that plan by March 1st. With that, do you have any questions for myself or Justine?
We have a couple of questions. Commissioner Kraft.
Excuse me. Regarding the vaccinations, did you have any staff or inmates who did not want to take or have vaccinations?
Yes, many.
And how did we handle that?
Well, it's optional for them. Unfortunately, we can track the number of vaccinations that we provided to staff, but there are a number of staff, myself included, that received a vaccination by their own medical provider, so it's not possible for us to identify how many staff actually received the flu vaccination. We could pull a number of the number of inmates that received the vaccination from our medical department.
And were many of those who refused vaccination inmates?
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to do some follow-up.
Then regarding the influenza or the flu, did our staff contact or get the flu during this time?
We did hear some reports of staff receiving or getting the flu. Again, impossible to know if they got that at jail or at work, or if they received it in the community.
Then I just want to point out, by the way, it's a very good report. On page three under the enclosure six, you know, we're talking about Medicaid expansion being pushed back and pushed back and pushed back, and how some states aren't doing it, and I've read a lot about this in various publications, how expanding it helps the community health, the education system, the expansion is just all out good. And just to emphasize, this is another example of the stress placed on the criminal justice system when individuals are not receiving adequate medical and mental health care in the community. So, I'm using this opportunity to stand on my soapbox and yell at the public, "Let's get this done." Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner Morgan?
First, Amber, I'd like to express my appreciation of your work and passion for the job that you do at Corrections. Really, really, I know many of the commissioners, and I think all of them, share my opinion of how hard all the team down there works, but your leadership is really appreciated. On the bail issue, you mentioned about Harvard doing a study, and I'm not sure when that begins. I'd like to be certain, as we talk about bail, and I think Commissioner Boyle, you've been involved in that area and have brought it to our attention, I'd like to be certain that whatever discussions we have concerning that, you know, that we have those discussions right here at our board meeting often, and we get public input and so on, because it's such an important issue, and we want to be certain that we're listening to all sides of that and the opinions of many, and I've already heard some of those expressed. So, we'll see how that goes and keep us updated on how the timeline looks on that in the future. And again, thank you for being here this morning, and I know that Dr. Myers is out of town or whatever on some correction business, so thank you for being here.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Thanks for this. The minority population in the Corrections Center, I think, is reflected on page three at about 65 and a half percent. Is that about right?
Let's see what page you're looking at. You're on page three? Yeah, you're tallying up the minority population there?
Yeah.
Yes, yep.
65 and a half percent minority population.
Yes.
And the staffing on page 10 shows authorized staff, 470, and we are currently with the additions that you indicated at 434 overall.
Yes, that's for all full-time staff.
So, that's a 92% staffing, but under the Corrections Officer component, the largest component, authorized staffing is 337, and we are at 305.
Yeah, and that's a compilation of our Correction Officer I and II's. You have a different category for both the sergeants and lieutenants that are both.
I see that, and they're at 100%, but the line officers, the largest category of employees at the Corrections Center, are at 90%?
Yes.
Okay. And then, there's a classification in there, and maybe you could just clarify this for us real quick, called Pacific Officer.
Yeah, we need to expand that field. That's actually the title it's pulling from HR. We just need to expand the field. It's for our classification officers.
They're courthouse officers?
Classification officers. They do all of the inmate classification within the jail.
Okay. We're authorized to have eight, and we actually have nine, so they're actually at 112%?
Yes.
Expand a little bit on that classification job.
So, they classify all of the inmates at intake and throughout the duration of their stay. They're interviewing inmates upon admission and deciding where to best house them based on criminal history, jail history, and other factors. Yes, we have been over in that category for several months now due to a hiring that took place many months ago. That has actually corrected itself this month. Not only did we have a classification officer resign, we are also in the process of hiring a classification supervisor that ideally we would promote from within, which is actually going to put us in the negative for that particular category. So, it was some future planning that we haven't quite accomplished yet.
Sure. So, that's stabilizing at the authorized level through attrition?
Yes.
Right. Finally, the overtime numbers that you indicated were, I believe, almost 8,100 hours, 8,093 hours, and at a cost of $327,000 for the month, right? That seemed to have come down a little bit from the last couple, three months. Is that right?
Yes.
Why is that?
Well, probably a couple of different factors. Our hiring continues to improve.
That's good.
And people usually come to work during the holidays. They have a few extra pay incentives to do so, which helps minimize our overtime.
Very good. That's progress. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Amber. Are there any other questions or comments for Amber or Justine? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
On this flu thing, Amber, we know that inmates incarcerated are not eligible for Medicaid, but relative to the getting flu shots, what's our policy on that, both on staff and on inmate populations relative to flu shots?
It's made available, but optional, so it's their decision on whether or not they want to receive the flu vaccination.
Right. So, do our staff pretty much all have flu shots?
No. We were thinking maybe about half of the staff, you know.
Did they suffer? Yeah, yeah, I understand. Did they suffer as well from this outbreak?
Yeah, we did receive, again, we can't attribute it to something that they received while working. As you know, the rates in Douglas County are also phenomenal this time of year, but we did hear some reports from staff that they were diagnosed with influenza.
And do you have an idea of how many we're talking about?
No. I suspect the number of people that came forward, there was also a number of people that didn't come forward to let us know that they received the flu. They were just sick.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
One thing I think we probably ought to consider is, you know, you can't go to work in a hospital facility without proving that you've had all your inoculations. Mr. Borgeson's a refugee from a hospital. Is that the fact? Is that the case? I bet, oh, you weren't listening to me.
I wasn't listening.
No, I know. It's okay.
(laughing).
That's okay. Not the first time.
I'm just being honest.
Honesty's really a dagger in the heart. Anyway, no, you have to have proved that you've had your vaccinations and so forth before you work in a health facility. I think we ought to be, really ought to impose that on our correctional facilities, because first of all, it leads to people being off work and ill, which is in their benefit, but also ours. We're interested in having them at a full house, so I think we ought to consider that. I don't know what our legal ability is to do that. I'll ask our legal beagle to think about that and tell us at some future date. So, that's, I think, pretty important. And the other thing I want to mention, too, is that we, Commissioner Kavanaugh brought it up about Medicaid, you know, Medicare. When people come into the facility, our terrific federal government, I guess that's who does it, strips people of their medical care. So, then it shifts it to the Douglas County taxpayer, and I believe this year our contract with our medical provider is approaching $6 million. So, thank you, all these people up above who shove things down and then lecture us about cutting spending. So, I think it'd be a nice thing if we could figure it out, figure out a way to not to strip these people of their health care when they walk in the door, that suddenly they're hanging in suspension. And then, of course, when they go to leave, they have to reapply, and a lot of our folks are not exactly in the mood to reapply or know how to do it or any of the other things. I mean, it really is a ridiculous situation. It's just absolutely unfair to the people who come in, to the poor. Many of them are poor, and even if they're not, it's ridiculous that they have to do that, and the cost to the local taxpayer accelerates tremendously. So, we need to try to figure that out. Yes?
Commissioner Borgeson?
Just to piggyback on that, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, as you know, NACO's working on that at the national level very hard, and it is. It's a direct shift to the local taxpayers. So, one of the things I've tried to explain even to our state senators when they say the expansion of Medicaid is going to, you know, cost us, but the population, just say those coming into our jail who have Medicaid, they already have it. They're not going to cost the state any more money because they already have it. Now, where they're going to cost them money is if that IMD issue is ever waived or taken away.
What's that?
The IMD, the Institute of Mental Disease, where they can actually collect the Medicaid when they come into the facility. When the law was written, they kind of combined prisons and jails all into one category, and there's a huge difference. Prisons, they're there for a long time. Jail, they're only there for a very short time, but it does affect those being able to carry on their Medicaid coverage. So, the state did a few years back change the Nebraska law that says you're terminated, your Medicaid is terminated, to Medicaid being suspended. So, what the difference of that is, is the shorter time for the individual once they get out to get back on their Medicaid, which was a good thing.
Yeah.
But you're right. This is a direct shift to our local taxpayers in picking up the total coverage of medical. total coverage of medical on those individuals that step foot in our corrections facility. So we're working on that.
Yep. The other thing I want to mention is bail. On my seat on the Criminal Justice Committee that meets, I really was kind of knocked around pretty solidly when I brought up bail, that the county commissioners want to do something to get people out of the facility, and we're concerned about bail and how it holds down people. And sometimes for pretty ridiculously low bail that they sit there and sit there, and of course, it runs up our bill, but the other thing, it's inherently unfair to the people who are there. They lose their jobs, it spins out into the people that they're taking care of, go on welfare. I mean, it is a ridiculous situation, and there's so much, the state really focuses so much on penalties and punishment. And on the other hand, we are involved in trying to get people rehabbed and out of there, get them housing, do all sorts of things, help. We have a long way to go on mental health, a long, long way to go on that, and it's not just the people incarcerated, but our community as well. I mean, we see that all the time. That's a whole nother thing. We need to reshuffle our priorities, and we need to have a real good talk about that. But bail is a hot issue. I got chewed out by a local, one of our judges, and also frankly, our prosecutors came down pretty hard and said, you know, you people need to kind of get your nose out of what we're doing. And I thought, well, we're not going to, so nothing new.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, that's, I would like to have the information of how many are in our jail currently that are sitting out, sitting in there because they couldn't pay their bail. One of the things, if you really look at the conversations that's going on around this, and Commissioner Rogers has been involved in this issue much more than I have, but there's lessons to be learned on how we move forward with this. But what I think would be very important at this point is either if the, your committee as corrections creates a task force to look at this, or through the Criminal Justice Management Committee, one of those, we need to make sure we're getting right information, because something was put out there about this, and I don't know what, but people are not, they don't have the facts of what we're actually talking about, and they're getting very upset. So I think if we have a task force with all involved, and that would include, you know, the county attorney and the public defender, so that as we move forward with this discussion, we know how to craft this, again, based on the lessons learned from, you know, Texas and New York and who else?
New Jersey.
And New Jersey. We can learn from those lessons on what worked and what didn't work. So, Mr. Chair, I don't know if you can have the chair of that committee or the chair.
That's Mike Myers.
What's that?
That's Mike Myers.
That's Mike?
The chair, yeah. And he has sent information out to, I know, that subcommittee.
Okay.
And I don't hear him saying he doesn't want to chair it and get more involved, so I think he's just volunteered.
So he just volunteered. But again, it is going to be a hot topic, and it is going to be discussed in the legislature, and it is going to come back to this board, and I think that, again, we can craft it to be of benefit to us. It's not, I mean, I'm actually getting people who are saying, we're letting out dangerous individuals, and we are creating a public safety hazard. Well, that's not true. And so, again, we just have to be able to have some type of a forum that we can really lay out the details of what we want to move forward with on this.
I'll follow up on that.
All right, great.
If Mike Myers is back in town.
Great.
Good conversation, important topic.
Great.
Thank you. Anything else for the good of the cause?
Thanks.
I suspect Amber would probably like to sit down with her little friend, if she could.
Thank you.
Amber, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we have no need for executive session, so if we have a motion to adjourn, all right, we stand adjourned then as the Board of Corrections, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Board of Commissioners.
So we're not, you're just adjuring the board?
Hmm?
We're just going to adjourn, we're not going to vote?
We're not going to vote.
Okay.
I don't vote on adjournment. If you have a motion and you're at the end of the agenda, you can declare adjourn.
I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. All right. Commissioner Borgerson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Commissioner Morgan.
Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you. The first item for the board's consideration is the minutes from the Board of Commissioners meeting last week, and claims for payment through January 21. What is the will of the board?
Motion.
I'll be abstaining, not because of a yes or no vote, but because there are checks to my company, and that's why I'm abstaining.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Commissioner Morgan. Okay, we have a motion to approve A and B. If there are no questions or comments, could we please vote?
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Morgan abstains. Other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. Consent agenda. We find on their items A through G, is there anything in here that anybody would like pulled out for individual attention or discussion?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Borgerson, second by Commissioner Boyle. No questions or comments? Could we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We have a couple of recognitions and proclamations. We have a couple of county employees retiring. Linda Die from the Douglas County Extension Office after fifteen years of service. Good morning, Karen.
Good morning, Commissioners. Karen Butch, HR Director. I am honored and pleased to be able to recognize Linda Die. Linda has been employed with us since November of 2004, and she retired on December 31st of 2019. And for fifteen years, she served as a receptionist secretary at the extension office and was the face that you saw when you walked in the door, that was always smiling and friendly. During her tenure, she worked for three different leaders of extension, and I'm sure all of those were a little bit different individuals to work for. And I can say that I know, in talking to Linda and getting to know her, that she's very dedicated, and she was very hardworking, but more importantly, she had a real passion for the extension office and its mission, and the services it provided to our citizens and the community. And so it is my honor to be able to read in the resolution today, recognizing her for her service. So with that, whereas Douglas County, Nebraska recognizes that its employees are the county's most important asset and resource for providing quality service to citizens of Douglas County, and whereas the county wishes to recognize Linda A. Die of Douglas County Extension Office on her retirement and dedicated service of fifteen years to Douglas County, Nebraska, now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that the county recognizes Linda A. Die for her dedicated service to the citizens of Douglas County, and thankfully presents this resolution of testimony thereof dated this day, the 14th of January 2020.
Right. We have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and have the vote if we could, and then.
Motion passes six to zero.
Always want to see if it passes first. Linda, did you have anything you want to say?
Yes, I want to thank each of you for your support with Douglas and Sarpy County Extension. I realize it's not a huge support, but our job is the public, and we have thousands of people that come through that door, that we help every year free, give them direction, give them nutrition through the schools with NEP, the 4-H program. I know most people think it's rural, and it's anything but. It is definitely inner city, and the programs that we support for that, and it's all free to the public. We have over two hundred volunteers and master gardeners alone that serve this city throughout parks, libraries, and extension. I just invite all of you to have a look at the website and see what the extension really does. I've been involved in it for over fifty years, people, so I'm getting up there, and I know a lot of how it has changed from day one, when I first was a 4-Her, to now. So it's just incredible, worthy thing, and I thank you so much for your support. I hope you continue.
You're a bit of an advocate for extension. It kind of shows.
I love what I did.
This is a good thing, other than your retiring. Commissioner Kraft.
And we'd like to thank you very much, but I do want to remind you, there are still opportunities. You can volunteer for the Douglas County.
I'm open.
Douglas County Fair and the Douglas County Extension Foundation, and we sure would like to see you there.
Thank you. I will consider that. I volunteer a lot for my church, but I still have time.
Excellent. And you can have more time. You're retired.
Yeah, I know. I love this, but I miss extension. I miss what I did and how we served the public so well.
You guys do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Borgerson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just congratulations, and you were the perfect face to see when we walked in the door. And I so enjoy coming out to the master gardener luncheon. There's gardeners across the county that have been years and years and years and years of giving their time to the master gardener program. I myself was a 4-H leader many, many years ago. So I love the 4-H program, and it isn't just for rural. This was right in the heart of Millard, that I had my little 4-H club. So thank you for all you have done, and hope we continue to see you do for Douglas County.
So thank you.
Thank you. May we shake your hand?
I'm a Nebraska Extension Registered Dietitian with our Food, Nutrition, and Health team. I've been with Extension eighteen years, so Linda's been there fifteen, so she was there when I was still a baby. So I think Karen really nailed it on the head. She was the face of Extension, always professional, classy, super stylish, and we're really going to have a big gap to fill with her gone, so we appreciate your continued support to support our office. You're always welcome to stop by, and I know she'll continue to advocate for what we do. So we appreciate you all, and if you need anything else, let us know.
Thank you so much.
Stand up and have her come in front and get a picture that way.
You do more pictures than I do.
Go around. All right, let's go.
Other than we're losing a good employee. We have another employee to be recognizing, another one retiring, Frederick Kemish, retiring from the Douglas County Health Center after twenty-two years of service. Is Mr. Kemish here? Okay, this ought to go quicker. We do have a resolution for him here. Motion and a second to approve the resolution for Frederick Kemish. Questions or comments? Could we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, and we will get this along to Mr. Kemish after the meeting. Citizen comments? Anybody wish to address the county board on anything not on the agenda? Good morning, Larry.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Just very quickly, some soundbites, but I'd like to go back to what Mary Ann said a little bit earlier, that something about, in regards to the bail thing, people don't have the facts. Well, maybe part of the reason is because we don't really hear much discussion in these bodies, and we don't all go down to the state to hear their discussions, and we don't go to the breakfast meetings and the supper meetings that you folks have. But we do find out quite often, and I think this is part of the problem, that in these various other bodies, not the World Herald, we can get a lot of the details about a lot of these programs, but we don't know that these are true facts either. But there's a lot of information in here. A few soundbites from a recent one out of the Omaha Star. Leads me to try to point out that people get confused because conflicting statements. Now, this particular article is talking about affordable housing in North Omaha and the $5,000 tax credit if you buy a house there in an extremely blighted area. Well, I happen to be in a partial extremely blighted area, but I don't get a $5,000 tax credit because I already, I already own a house. It goes on to say that you can, you have to live in it, you have to live in it for five years before you sell it. The implication is you can sell it. So there's an opportunity for people to make a profit in five years. But then where does TIF financing come into that? Because that's mentioned in this article. Now, how do we get to North Omaha affordable housing with TIF financing? How is that tied to the $5,000 tax credit? Is that going to apply to people that buy apartments in the new shoeboxes? You don't have time to tell us all that stuff here. Well, I don't have the facts about bail either, but that doesn't mean that everybody that talks about offenders getting out that are more violent and repeat offenders and doing that again, it doesn't mean those people that are fearful of that don't have the facts. It doesn't mean they're wrong. Those are citizens expressing concerns. And it's not necessarily the same as in other states and the same as in other cities, so we don't necessarily want our facts based on their facts. Then the other thing that comes out in some of these articles, again, this was in, once again, I think, the Omaha Star, talking about the riverfront development and one of these big complexes, I'm not going to look it up at the moment, but they disclose that the, one of the main organizations that's behind it is contributing money. The city is going to contribute three million dollars, and then lots of private organizations are contributing a hell of a lot more than that, and it names them. But that's never disclosed at any of our meetings. And unless you bother to go out to various subcommittee meetings, down to the state, and you look at all the different pieces of information available in Omaha, you're not going to know any of that, because it's not in the World Herald, and it's not in the agenda, and if it's on the agenda, you can't talk about it. And if you want to comment during comments, you can't, you can't talk in back and forth about it. So how does citizen get their information? Thank you.
Anybody else under citizen comments? We next have a presentation from Dr. Paige Wally, the President and Chief Public Policy Officer of St. Francis Ministries. Commissioner Rogers, I'd ask for you to do the intro on this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, to that point, Commissioner Boyle was making, this is a request that he actually made last year. We tried to make it happen a little bit toward the end of the year, but it couldn't. They gave this presentation at Promise Ship's location before the transition happened, and we had the discussion, they agreed to come, and want to thank him for my understanding. He's came from Memphis today, and he's on the flight out here at once, so we want to thank you for coming here forward. But again, this is the transition into the organization that'll be taking over from Promise Ship, and he'll talk a little bit about the law and that they're going to be operating under it, go from there. So thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Chairman Duda, and Vice Chairman Rogers, members of the Commission.
the commission, thank you so much for allowing me to come and present to you. We do have hard copies of the PowerPoint that are being distributed to you. As Commissioner Rogers mentioned, I was asked to provide some comments to a gathering here in Omaha back in November on the new Family First Prevention Services Act, the federal act that changed how child welfare financing works and how it impacts municipalities, counties, and states. And so Mr. Rogers, Commissioner Rogers attended, asked me if I could come and do an abbreviated presentation to you, so it's a pleasure to be with you. Just a bit of background, I am a former proud 4-H member myself, and a clinical psychologist by training and trade, former state legislator. I was the commissioner over the State Department of Children's Services in Tennessee, and then over all of the human services in the state of Alabama before moving into the foundation world. And beginning a couple of years ago, I joined St. Francis Ministries, which is headquartered in Salina, Kansas, a large national, international social services provider, as their Chief Public Policy Officer. And so I do reside in the Memphis area, in a small community outside of Memphis, and have the privilege of traveling about, engaging with leaders like yourself, to have conversations and learn about your vision for the children and families of the community, your ownership of those children and families, the outcomes they face. I'm also so pleased today to say that I'm joined by Jody Austin, who is our St. Francis Ministries Regional Vice President, is a Nebraskan, works here in Nebraska, leads our work in Nebraska. So I'm going to talk really more globally about the Family First Prevention Services Act and what opportunities that provides to Nebraska. And Jody will be a person of contact for you going forward that can answer more specific questions about the kind of work and where we're doing it and how we're doing it here in Nebraska. Let me just, as another brief way of introduction, mention to you, I grew up in a town of 100 people, about an hour east of Memphis, very, very small community. Chairman Morgan probably has traveled there on his Elvis expeditions, but we're not far from Tupelo, north of, over in Tennessee, but north of Tupelo. In my community, if you came into it as a visitor and people didn't recognize you, at least when I was a child, there'd be something intriguing that happened. You'd be asked a question probably, and that question wouldn't be where are you from. That question would be, hey, who are your people? Who are your people? Because folks there, and I'm sure it's not different in many small communities around our country, were identified by the family or the group with whom you're associated. Who are your people? Who do you belong to? I belong to John and Betty Wally down the street. You know, I'm one of their children. That's something I always have enjoyed remembering and recalling, because as we're going to be talking today, we're talking about children and families here in Douglas County. These are your people. These are our people now at St. Francis, too. Folks that we're hoping to seek and serve in collaboration with you. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to hit just a few highlights of what we know about basically the child welfare landscape in Nebraska, and then talk more specifically about the Family First Prevention Services Act as it connects. Just another foundational comment. We have, as a nation, transcended from the mindset that used to persist that we've got to rescue kids from bad families, that our job is to go out and see where the bad families are, the bad parents are, take their kids, raise them in out-of-home care, and hope that things work out. Through the wisdom of the policymakers and researchers and whatnot, we know that children are better off in loving forever homes with families, and that even in circumstances where we have to make decisions to remove children because of severe abuse and neglect, it remains traumatizing for that child to be taken from those they know, from their people, even when those people aren't treating them as we know they could and should. So there was a transformation in how child welfare practice is overseen by the federal government and by state governments now, where it is presumed that children are better off in permanent loving homes, preferably their own homes with their biological family, if not some forever home through adoption or permanent kinship placement or guardianship. And that we look at measures of outcomes on safety, on permanency, and on well-being. But even though that practice had changed, the financing structure from the federal government's Social Security Act Title IV that funds most of this work across the nation paid states only when children were removed and placed in out-of-home care. So the financing structure paid for bed nights, so that if you were able and you believed that children were better off in homes, and we could do some things for children and families to keep them safe in their own homes, you couldn't have the financing that would serve to prevent removal. There had to be a removal first and then payment. We, and many like us, spoke very passionately and diligently and over years to get that funding formula changed, and that's what the Family First Prevention Services Act actually does. It allows for preventing problems upstream instead of waiting for the trauma and the ultimate removal, and it strengthens families. So a little bit about what we know about Nebraska's child welfare landscape is the majority of children in Nebraska, just like in most every other state, enter because of neglect, not abuse. Neglect can take many forms, and I know your DHHS people can talk to you about how they go about assessing levels of neglect before they make recommendations for removal or intervention. I'll just say this. A real-life situation in another state where a young adolescent girl was removed from her mother because of what was judged to be neglect. The refrigerator was broken. There was no food in it. The mother, the single mother couldn't provide for the kids. The child was removed, placed in out-of-home care with strangers, caring strangers, loving strangers, strangers nevertheless. But you know what the girl asked, folks? Would it have been easier just to buy my mom a refrigerator? You know, from the mouth of babes. We know that annually approximately 45% of children who enter out-of-home care are ages birth to five. Also, that 46% of those kids have at least one parent who used to themselves be a state ward. So these are children of children who have been impacted by the system. 50% or more of children entering care, out-of-home care here in Nebraska are due to parental substance use and abuse. And then, as of January 2019, approximately 60% of the children are served in out-of-home care and 40% are in home. Now, fortunately, there are some trends here in Nebraska that are very promising, and Nebraska's to be commended for that. The children in foster care placed in a relative or kinship foster home. So this is, these are kids that are getting to stay with their people, and there's real diligent effort to find them. Opportunities to do so is up from, you know, 48% in 2014 to 60% in 2019. Likewise, children who placed in out-of-home congregate care is down from 8.3% to 5.4% over that same time period. So what we know is that even in the best of what we assume are caring situations with loving foster parents or historic congregate care facilities where there's group care, we still know that children don't do as well as when they're in loving forever permanent homes. So the Family First Prevention Services Act, which passed, became law in February of 2018, allows now for doing something about that. It expands the use of our federal funds to provide a discreet array of services, and I'll tell you what those are in a minute, to keep children safely with their families and out of foster care. It also is very clear that it's going to disincentivize removing children and place them in foster care or other out-of-home care, and there are going to be reimbursements that are tightened if and when that happens because we're making decisions that we're going to do whatever we can do to incentivize keeping kids at home, serving kids at home, preventing issues, and moving kids toward permanent homes. The implementation of this Family First Prevention Services Act is up to states. They can accept the funding beginning October of 2019 up to October of 2021, where it won't any longer be optional. You've got a two-year phase in. Nebraska DHHS has chosen the October 2019, and so currently, they are operating under receiving what you're going to learn more about of these funds. So the investing in prevention and supporting families, we know that a child or youth can receive services that they are what is called candidates for foster care, and that's defined very broadly. It's left up to the states to decide. The federal government is saying, you decide how broad you want it. It's just anyone who's at imminent risk of entering foster care, and that could be about any child that you wish to say. You know, it could be every child in Douglas County. It could be a more defined number. It's up to the state to make that decision. They could remain safely at home with their parents or with kinship caregivers with family first supports. I don't know about the demographics of Douglas County, but I do know in so many of the places where I work, Kentucky being one instance, there are thousands of children who live with aunts, uncles, grandparents, and they're not receiving the kind of supports they need to really keep that child thriving and well. Kinship caregivers can receive those services if they're going to prevent that child's entry into out-of-home care, and also pregnant and parenting foster youth can receive the services. Children who are candidates for care just have to have a written foster care prevention plan that identifies them as at risk, and then that they can remain home safely if these services are provided, and then those services have to be what, and you'll hear this terminology, and I think it's very important, trauma-informed, evidence-based services. Those words just basically mean this is stuff we know that works. This is just not something that someone says, you're getting counseling. As a clinical psychologist, when I ran the Department of Human Services in Alabama, nothing infuriated me more than when my kids were being placed into, often by well-intended judges, into counseling services. And then those counseling services were the next thing to eternal life. You were never coming out. You didn't know what the goals were. You didn't know if you were achieving them. You didn't know how to measure progress. So we had to radically change that because what they were receiving wasn't helping. What has to happen now is that services either are categorized as promising, supported or well-supported, and are listed on a Title IV Prevention Services clearinghouse, and those are the ones that are going to be used because those are the ones that have been showed through validated research are effective. The kinds of services that candidates can receive, and these are important because just from listening a little bit to your conversation during your Board of Corrections session, mental health treatment, substance abuse prevention treatment, in-home parenting skills programs, and individual counseling, those are the three categories of services, having to be those trauma-informed, evidence-based programs that are approved, that can be purchased with these family first dollars. Any child in their own home with kin who are identified as at risk for possibly coming into care is eligible for these services, as are their parents or kinship providers, for a 12-month period. There's no income eligibility, so here is one of those opportunities where there doesn't have to be a means test in order to qualify to get these kinds of services. So I think, everywhere I go, and I'm on a city council myself, everywhere I go, you know, mental health, substance use disorder, parenting needs are legion. Here's one methodology for obtaining those for families in need and keeping more of those children safely at home. Right now, if my numbers were right, and Jody was kind of to give me about 1,700 kids in care here in the Omaha area. That's a lot of children. It's actually up in the last quarter of the year. The trend has been for that to be going down most places, and I think it'll come down here again. But it's, that's just one of those special, this is one of those special opportunities to use these services to provide for strengthening families and keeping kids safely at home. I'm going to go very quickly through the rest of this because it kind of gets a little bit more into what kind of settings can be used if a child.
May I ask a question on that last slide?
Certainly.
Okay, when you said 1,700 kids in care in Omaha, meaning in home care, out-of-home care, or between the two?
Both.
Okay, thank you.
A combination. All children in the receiving services.
I needed that clarification.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So if a child cannot be kept safely at home for whatever reason, then these Title IV dollars can still go to support them, but the services are more limited as far as time. There are more requirements because there is an incentive to try to move them quickly to permanent homes. And so I'll show you very briefly that you can treat a child in a foster home. There are some other specified settings, but all of a sudden there's going to have to be quite a bit of oversight, and a judge is going to be involved, and there are going to be ongoing evaluations of progress. A foster family home, you'll see the requirements of being approved as a foster family home in most states. Then there's specified settings. I didn't think I'd hear the term IMD again for quite a while, but there it is. A qualified residential treatment program is another one of the places that a child could be served. And this is kind of a new designation. QRTP is a congregate care facility, but it's one that has evidence-based, trauma-informed programming, 24/7 staffing. The child can't be there but for a time-limited amount. A judge has to authorize any continued services. And so there's some, there's some real hurdles that are designed to provide quality care for that child for a time-limited basis and move them more quickly toward home. Some other settings, some services for pregnant and parenting teens. Another one where St. Francis is involved in our work in Kansas and expanding into Illinois and working with victims of sex trafficking. And I'm sure that's something you all have discussed and have to develop thinking around interventions. Those who are 18 years or older living independently, there's some latitude for supervised setting, serving those kids, and then a licensed residential family-based substance use treatment facility up to 12 months. So that's the allowance for the more congregate care settings. I'm not going to spend time on the next couple of slides about the Title IV modifications that the Family First Act impacted. But I will mention to you, just under opportunities.
Can you have the little pages numbered? I don't know why you are.
I'm sorry. I don't have, I've got it up on the PowerPoint. I'm sorry. I don't have the.
You don't have any numbers?
I don't have numbers on them.
So where do you think that is?
I'm going to say it's about three or four from the back.
Okay, I got it now. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
I'm a numbered pages freak.
I apologize. I should have been more thoughtful of that.
That's right.
So I'll go through the modifications. I won't go through the modifications. We're on the next page, additional modifications. But I would like to go to a page that you'll see called Federal Update, and it is about two from the back, two or three from the back, or four. And it mentions the Family First Transition Act of 2019. That was, that was something that was just passed in the waning days of 2019. And what the Family First Transition Act does, it says, look, we know that states like Nebraska, who are early adapters, because Nebraska chose to begin implementation October 2019, are going to have some physical challenges just making the transition, just getting some of these services up and running, and we're going to provide some additional resources for that. So the Family First Transition Act in particular is allowing Nebraska, it's estimated about $3 million, to help with a variety of just the implementation challenges that they will face as they roll this out. The Child Abuse Prevention Treatment Act, you'll hear the acronym CAPTA from time to time. It still is awaiting approval. But the Family First But the Family First Transition Act is something that I think you'll be hearing more about. Certainly, the DHHS people can speak to you about it. I also have for you, that you will see on the last page, we on our website have something called the Family First Prevention Services Act Toolkit. It can tell anyone and everyone, not only all about it, but how to go about the implementation, as well as some of my contact information. And I am certainly agreeable to answering, you know, any questions you have now electronically. And certainly, I know that Jody is the one that will have more of the expertise in some of the Nebraska specifics that you might, over time, wish to know more about. So, this is a nice opportunity for Nebraska, for every state, to be able to say, "Look, we're tired of watching our children wash over the falls and catch them at the bottom. We need to get further upstream and serve the families and the children there." This is finally the financing that allows that to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Wally. We do have several questions for you, Commissioner Boyle. And I was remiss in missing, this was originated at your request. Commissioner Rogers made it happen, but I forgot.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You started the conversation, and I appreciate it.
That's fine. Thank you.
I appreciate, first of all, your coming up and flying through, let's see, Chicago, Milwaukee, and Minnesota, some place to get here. Thank you. We're sorry about that. I'll mention that to the airport authority. The reason that I was interested in hearing from you folks is, and I'm a very candid person, and we don't have a lot of time, but was turmoil that I really saw happening with the child services that were coming along, and frankly, the lack of our Republican legislature and our Republican governor to put any money to the problem. I'm very concerned about, about that, and I'm concerned about the staffing. I don't know who you hired or what their qualifications are. And to be very blunt, there's an awful lot of children who are sexually abused. We go through these rounds and read about them, and all sorts of people are, we just had a terrible story about Omaha teachers who have been abusing children, and it happens in the Catholic schools, and as we know, the priests, the whole thing. There just seems to be a whole subculture in people who do these things to children, and I don't think your place is, is a safe place. I just think it can be. I don't know. You know, I want to ask you, who are you hiring? I mean, are you hiring people who are previously done this sort of thing in the past? I mean, not the child abuse, but have you got people who have done these sort, performed these services in the past? And what are their qualifications? Are they off the street, or what's the deal? Where do they come from?
Well, I'm going to probably need to defer to Jody for that, but we're hiring masters-level people that have a background in doing this work and then providing them with the ongoing training and supervision. But let me let Jody speak to that.
Sure, absolutely.
Can you put the mic close to your mouth, please? Thank you.
Sure, is that better?
Yes.
Thank you.
We are hiring-
Could you introduce yourself, too, please?
Absolutely. My name is Jody Austin. I am Regional Vice President for St. Francis Ministries. That serves the Eastern Service Area, which includes Douglas and Sarpy Counties.
Okay, thank you.
Currently, we are hiring case managers and a plethora of other positions. Case managers need to have at least a four-year bachelor's degree plus some experience. We privilege people who, or prefer people who have a higher level of education as well. The majority of our current staff actually transitioned from promiscip to St. Francis, and we encourage that because we wanted continuity as much as possible during the transition.
Okay, so, are you able to staff your facilities adequately? Are you running into hiring problems? Or are you, when you say they have experience, are they have experience with what they're going to be doing, or are they have experience working in an auto shop or something?
They have experience in child welfare, in all various different ways of helping children and families. They understand basic child development. They family, understand family systems and how they operate. They understand prevention, intervention, critical thinking, all of those things.
And do you do criminal background checks on all these people?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I'm curious, too. I spoke to you earlier about the foundation of the, when you see St. Francis, you know, we have some organizations in Omaha that are associated with the Catholic Church, St. Francis, but that's not what this is, and that's not important. Can you tell us who, who the company is and-
Certainly. St. Francis Ministries is a, is a, you know, historically faith-based, not-for-profit that was founded in the 1940s as, by an Episcopal priest. It was named in honor of St. Francis at that time. St. Francis then began to grow not only in serving, at that time, basically as a boys' home. Young men particularly coming up during the early post-World War II era that were finding their way into, you know, the difficult times. Our founder had a heart for that, and this was, he served all of Western Kansas, and so developed this in Salini. It began to grow, and over the course of 70 years, has expanded now into eight states. We work in El Salvador and in Guatemala. We have offices, our headquarters in Salina, but we have offices in Washington, DC, where we do much of our government relations work from, in Chicago, in Louisville. We provide direct services on contract with states and jurisdictions in Nebraska, Kansas, Oklahoma, Texas, Arkansas. We are now expanding into Illinois, Kentucky. And then we do a variety of other kind of consultation work with organizations in Iowa, in Oklahoma, and are in a, in a bit of a, we feel, a healthy deliberative growth mode. Our board has asked us to, to begin to look, "How can we best meet and collaborate with government leaders to address the social services needs that they're encountering?" That's, I mentioned sex trafficking in the state of Illinois. We've been asked to partner with the State Department of Children and Family Services with opening a residential treatment program for sexually trafficked, exploited young women in the greater Chicago area.
What kind of, have you had complaints about your services? And if so, what are the complaints? And what, do you have any problem with people who've been abusing children? I'm sorry, I'm very blunt.
Oh, sure. I mean, I, I can't tell you any specific complaints. I'm sure anyone that provides this and does this work is going to have complaints. When I was commissioner in Tennessee and Alabama, there were always complaints. If you take someone's children from them, you're going to have complaints.
Well, I don't mean complaints about you taking my kids. I'm saying you, somebody, someone of your employees assaulted a boy or a girl. Do you have complaints like that that are really of substance? I don't, I don't want to hear about the parents whining. That's, that's another matter.
Yeah. You know, has it ever happened? I'm sure it has. I've been with the organization two years. I'm unfamiliar with that. Certainly, I, I would be stunned if we haven't had some complaint.
Okay, well, I'd like to know about those and what you, what you are doing to make sure that doesn't happen in your facilities, ever.
Yeah.
We need to know that because that's, you're in charge of some very, very seriously damaged children who need help, and anybody who's a predator doesn't belong anywhere near your place. I'm sorry, I don't mean to say that you're doing that, but you know it happens.
Sure.
And if it is, and I'm sure it has, I'd like to know what you're doing to try to stop it.
And we, you know, we, as you say, we have some very aggressive efforts that, beginning with criminal background checks, beginning with, you know, ongoing intensive supervision to try to prevent it. Have we prevented every issue of it? I would be doubtful if we have. But I will certainly, and we, and just, I know that we use the term, I think you've used the term "facilities." We're not operating residential facilities in the historic, you know, meaning of that. Ours are more home and community-based work.
Yeah, okay. The, then you mentioned something about, I thought it was real interesting because there's some things that have happened as a result of this that's pretty good. You mentioned, "Would it be easier for this, this girl," she said, "to buy my mom a refrigerator?" Are you prepared to do that?
We are, and we have.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. There's a teacher in, I think, the East Coast in New York who discovered that children were wearing their clothes over and over. They didn't have, so he put a laundry, a laundry system inside the school, and they could do their clothes, and that was terrific. Real practical response, that's what I like to hear myself. Tell me about funding. The way that you, your company grows and expands is because you're making money. You have to. That's the American way. So, what, how is your funding comparing with your predecessors? Are you aware of that, or do you think you have enough money? I mean, how do you, how do you bill people based on the number of children, or do you have a contract with something else?
We have agreed upon contracts which we compete for with government entities. So, we respond to requests for proposals-
Right.
-and then propose based on the specifications of those specific, you know, offerings, and then are awarded those. We then, you know, operate as best we can within the margin of the dollars provided under those contracts and bill that way. We also do some very aggressive fundraising. We have a foundation that, you know, goes out and looks and cultivates benefactors, and we are continuing to look at ways that we can develop service offerings. I mentioned consulting work. We've begun to do that in the last year because we recognize that so often with these contracts, even the best of them, there's little to no margin to operate, you know, above basic expenses. Most of these are money losers. And if we only operated, you know, as a, in, with a business mentality exclusively, we probably wouldn't compete for many of these in some states. Now, that said, we feel that that's our mission as an organization that was built on a faith-based foundation. We also realize that we can supplement that and provide this service and go above and beyond what's asked for in contracts, which I sense that we do with, just as you mentioned, what do, what do the kids and families need, that are not necessarily billed to-
Your foundation would step in if the funding runs out.
That's right. Our foundation.
And do you, do you think you have adequate funding from the state, or what is the source of funding? From the state of Nebraska primarily, if not at all?
Yes, the funding is from the state of Nebraska. And while, while we have enough, I can also argue in every helping profession that I've ever done, there's, there's never enough, so.
Well, I mean, are, what are you going to do, then? Are you going to call on the foundation to step up and make up the-
Well, first, I'm going to be fiscally responsible and make sure that we're really critically thinking about why the children and families are involved, what interventions are designed that work to help those families stay together at all times. And if we can focus on that quality and practice of work and thinking through why we're here and being smarter about the interventions that we choose, that will go a long way in being able to allow us to be fiscally responsible.
It seems like one of the keys of your program is a prevention plan. Can you talk about that? Who writes that? Is that when you encounter the children and what their particular problems are, and then you come up with a prevention plan?
Go ahead.
That's, that's done in concert with the courts and with us and with the DHHS in this case. You know, the, the family is interviewed, the family is evaluated, assessed, and then the prevention plans are based on a collective assessment of what does this family need in order for this child to remain safely in this home, if that's possible. If it's not possible, there's going to be some decision about removing the child, placing them elsewhere. If it is possible, what are those services? And under this, when it comes to mental health, substance abuse, parenting, a plan of safety, a plan of permanency is developed, approved by, you know, the court, and then put into operation, monitored, and we are held accountable to ourselves and to the court for that.
So, the juvenile court is involved, the judges are involved in a prevention plan?
Not necessarily in the, in the prevention plan itself, but I think that we like to make, make the courts aware of what we're doing, how we're doing it. If a child is being removed, they're, they're very much involved in that safety plan for the child.
Yeah, and I'm curious about the word "prevention" because it seems like when you're, you're involved, it's too late to prevent.
Right.
It's responding to what's happened.
Right. And the prevention in this case, and I should have clarified this in the front end, prevention in this case is not necessarily what you and I might historically think of as primary prevention. This prevention is from the child ending up in out-of-home care. We're trying to prevent children being removed from families, from their people. So, that's what this prevention is involving. It's keeping kids at home when it can be done safely with parents, kin, guardians.
Okay, I have a funding question, then I'm going to ask Commissioner Borgerson and Commissioner Rogers to respond about how this fits in with some of the diversion and other things we're talking about. But I'd like to ask you, what are you paying people? What's, what's the dollar rate for a typical person you hire with a-
Oh, staff, you mean?
Yeah.
For a case manager? Gosh, I, I am not into the day-to-day. I want to say probably 38 to 42 is an average starting salary.
Thousand or hour?
Thousand.
Okay. I appreciate the information. I'm trying, I'll move it along, but I do want to ask Commissioners Borgerson and Rogers how this fits into what you championed, if I might. Could I do that?
Yeah, although I am going to call time on you after this. If you have more questions, we'll come back.
I don't have. I don't, I'm trying to keep this short.
Fine. Appreciate it. Nice job. Commissioner Rogers or Borgerson, if you care to respond.
I would, I would guess that one of, one phase is there's a, there's a group of kids that's in the detention center right now that are child welfare cases, but they've had some offense that they're on probation. And there's always this moral argument about who's responsible to pay for them, and they're sitting there. So, my, my thought is that some of the services that they have here to get upfront hopefully solves the issue with that kid before they commit the offense that's got them there. So, my hope is some of these funds in the Family First piece would hopefully serve that kid and family and prevent whatever issue caused them to get put in the system. So, at some point, there's, depending on about 10, 15 or so kids that have a, well, no, not that high, about 10 or less that have child welfare encounters, but they're sitting there waiting for who's going to debate, who's going to provide the service. So, hopefully, this gets them out of that realm.
Thank you. Same deal. Thanks. Didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I just want to see how this fits together.
I'll prepare to answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I think Commissioner Boyle covered it. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Kraft.
Yeah? Going, excuse me. Going back to the breakout of the 1,700 youth, how many of those are in home and how many are in out-of-home care?
I would like to clarify. There's different ways that we, different terminology we use to count. So, there are 1,700 cases in the Omaha area. There's probably about just under 2,000 total children that we're caring for. The reason we have to articulate that is because a case, if they're in home, is considered all of the children and their family. A case is out-of-home by child, for each child placed in an out-of-home setting.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Then you've mentioned your religions, religious-based organization. So, you have a Jewish child needs to be placed out of home. Is he placed in a Jewish family, if you can?
You know, I, I know this. I think if that was something that the, the court and the assessment recognized as an important part of that child's development and culture, again, the, the importance of not, of not being unaware of a child's cultural needs, we would absolutely do that. We are very cognizant, and we're not associated, affiliated with the Episcopal Church. That's how we were founded, and we are still led by a gentleman who is an Episcopal priest and yet came out of hospital administration, as the, as a director in hospital administration. Later in life, I became an Episcopal priest. So, it doesn't matter what the child or family's needs or background or religious affiliation or not, other demographic issues or not, we're going to serve them and try to be sensitive to the placement needs.
Could I also just add that we follow all of the federal requirements around the Multi-Ethnic Placement Act? And so, there are rules and regulations on what you can consider and what you can't. And at the end of the day, it's a matching process where you identify what the child needs, what the environment is that they likely will thrive in and, and match that way.
Part of the reason I am concerned about this, when I was a youth, probably fourth grade, I got invited to lunch at a friend's house who knew I was an Orthodox Jew. And they knew Jews didn't eat pork, but they wanted to make a point. So, they served milk and pork at that meal to make a point to me. And of course, I went hungry because I wasn't going to break my religion. And my concern is, you take an Orthodox Jew, or even a non-Orthodox Jew, who is practicing kosher, and then I get to the Muslims who also don't eat pork, and you put them in a family where that's all they're going to force them to eat, or they're going to make, force them to take off their head covering if it's a female. I want to make sure that does not happen. And the reason I want to make sure that does not happen goes back to when I was walking and I heard a guy say to a Muslim, "Take off the head covering and become an American." But if he saw a nun, would he say, "Take off that hair covering and become an American"? No, he wouldn't. I'm sure he wouldn't. So, you know, we've got these concepts, and we have these family traditions that are important to maintain, and I want to make sure you're doing that. So, can you give me assurances other than that law you just described?
I can absolutely give you assurances that we are doing everything we can to make sure that children not only are safe from harm, physical harm, emotional harm- sure that children not only are safe from harm, physical harm, emotional harm, that their culture and their race and their religion and everything else about them are being celebrated as much as possible. This underscores the absolute necessity, whenever possible, to keep children with their people.
Okay, and how well do you train and how often do you retrain or refresh the minds of your case handlers?
So they're constantly in training, it, it feels like. So they go through a rigorous six-month training before they even begin to really do casework. And then they can only do so many cases, or have so many cases on their caseload until, and then there's annual retraining requirements.
And what is that caseload per caseworker?
It averages like about one to seventeen cases.
Seventeen cases, okay. Then, sir, you mentioned the residential treatment facility in Chicago for girls who've been-
Yes, sir.
What about boys who've been trafficked?
That's something that we asked the Illinois Department of Children and Family Services, and certainly that is an issue. It is not, I guess, of the, the quantitative demand they seem to have on their system now. So they asked us to develop this. And so in partnership with them, we decided to go forward and to honor that and trying to develop it.
Okay. And in your training of your counselors, do you hammer in, and I do mean hammer in, this ethnic, religious, cultural issue over and over and over again? Because I know people who I hammer it into and it doesn't, it's as though I'm talking to a wall.
Well, training is a partnership between St. Francis and the Department of Health and Human Services, so I don't necessarily oversee their training. The reason training one and done isn't the most effective is because it's easy to forget. So what we are doing is what we call case consults or group supervision, where people are coming together and we're ensuring that case managers present the information about their families that are balanced and accurate, and we are very much asking about culture, race, ethnicity, relationships, and how we're honoring that. I can promise you, we're absolutely doing that every single day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Dr. Wally Mazzostin, I thank you so much for sharing with us what's going on. This is an ambitious undertaking, we of course wish you well. We're, a lot of us are a little skeptical of how the state is handling this, but I don't think, you know, you guys are just responding to what the state is doing and, and it sounds like you're well-prepared to take this on well. So I, I do thank you for sharing this with us, for making the trip in from Memphis for this and-
With your presentation, and I appreciate it, I hope I didn't seem too adversarial.
No, no.
I, listening to your presentation, the state most likely made a good choice. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's, we're very, very honored to have the privilege of coming before you. We do want to be good community partners, we do want to work closely with you and, you know, with Jody's leadership, I know we can, and I'm always available with the, the contact information that you have. And so, thank you. And Commissioner Kraft, I, having sat on that side of the, I, I understand the importance of being a, a passionate guardian of the public interest, so thank you.
You're welcome. And Commissioner Boyle has one, very quick, he said.
If, if there starts to be a meltdown or you see problems coming, please tell us.
All right. Thank you all. Appreciate the discussion.
Thanks.
Thank you so much, Dr.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Is there anything under the finance that you wanted to be sharing?
As presented.
Okay, and I see we've got the CAFRA on there and all, but we will then, we have basically one item left on the agenda, and I, I'm sorry that somebody had to be last, but this is a resolution regarding the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers study on flood risks in the Papio Creek Basin. Dams are an ongoing issue for much of our, our county, and, and I would ask, first, we have, we have Dr. Schultz here from, from UNO, whom we have worked with before, we have a good history with him, although I think I'd just soon start with the, the neighbors, if we could, and give us a brief background on what, what's going on here and what role you would like us to, to be playing in this. I think everybody remembers our, our good friend, Sean Malots, who is unable to join us today, but well-represented by her son, Grant.
I'm going to probably use this, so power button here, network, sorry. Don't let her know that one. Hello, Douglas County Board, my name is Grant Malots, 10404 North 132nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68142. I came before you today to ask for your help in obtaining information from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. But first, Sean would like to apologize for not being able to attend today's meeting as she is out of town on work. She asked that her comments from the December seventeenth, two thousand nineteen meeting be attached to this public testimony which I have provided. Not sure if any commissioners had the time to review any part of this lovely corps report, but here's a printout of what they sent, posted on their website. And after reading this, I had more questions than when I started. The concerning portion of this is the underlying data. To finish my master's degree in agriculture and biological systems engineering at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln, I too had to publish a paper. And any paper that I had to write had to include the underlying data so that the reader can come to the same conclusion as you did in writing your paper. Well, this corps report does not include any of the underlying data. For example, the cost section of the preliminary study was only about twelve pages with no breakdown of how they even got to individual costs for building each structure, including dams and so on. I would guess if anyone on your staff handed you a report with this kind of information, you require them to be able to provide you with the underlying data. Another major data component missing in this report is how the corps determined damages. My favorite part of this is the shock and awe number they include in the report, the one point nine billion dollars in the five-hundred-year floodplain. But the misleading portion of this number is if, that they look on the valuations from the Douglas County Assessor's website, and then in their report, they state they've inflated it by twenty percent. You cannot sit here and tell me that if it floods in the Exarban area, that all of the buildings in the floodplain will be destroyed, just mostly the bottom layer will have to be rebuilt or something. Also, why does the corps use this number when most of the proposed projects in their study are at best to protect against a hundred-year flood? Yet another concern is that the corps during their information meeting on December third was that they used Google Maps to measure the heights of the buildings in the floodplain. Does that sound like a reasonable way to determine how to spend a hundred million dollars of taxpayer money? Not to me. On another note, I want to make sure the commissioners are aware that of the concurrent proposed dam site number ten, which I have also attached on this, to my testimony, that north of highway, northwest of Highway one thirty-three and thirty-six, that they have at least two county roads that will have to be closed here and here, and possibly even the county line on Dutch Hall Road between Douglas and Washington County. And, and there, all, both of these roads, the Wash Douglas, or Pawnee and Doug, Doug, excuse me, Dutch Hall Road, just had bridges built brand-new in the last few years. In addition, it appears the corp is using several other misguiding assumptions in their favor, like using the trail count from Standing Bear Lake for computing recreational benefits on a new dam with no housing developments within five miles of the proposed location. This is why I'm here today to ask the Douglas County Board to request the corps the underlying data, so the affected dam site ten landowners have the opportunity to review this information to be able to understand the corps' conclusion within this report. And I will say all the kind of questions that Sean asked at the last meeting. Thank you for your time today.
Anybody have questions or anything for Grant?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, thank you for, that's a very, an excellent presentation and right to the point. I do intend at the end of this discussion to make a motion to do what you've asked. I have long been a skeptic about the use of dams for flood control. I mean, in Texas, they had thirty-four dams fail that flooded Houston. In, in northern Nebraska, recently, when they went through March and all these floods, they had at least one dam fail. Dams are not built to contain water, I mean, in the sense of stopping flooding. It's for recreation or other reasons. I mean, they're not built that way. I mean, they, they just simply aren't. And we've had flo, dams all over the area fail. And so it's a ruse to suggest that this is for flood control, it's for recreation. And they even, they do admit it in there, you know, aff and on. And I had, years ago, when I was, we were battling the NRD on some of this, these expenditures, I had a good friend of mine, and I, I guess I'd say a former good friend, although I saw him recently and he was friendly, he's a development lawyer, and he appears before the city council frequently. And he told me, he says, "Mike," he said, "What in the hell are you doing?" And I said, "What?" And he said, "About these dams." And I said, you know, his first name, I called him by his first name, I called him Bob. Bob, you know, I live in the old market. If you want to build dams and sell the sites and do all these things for people, do it on your own time and your own dime. You know, don't have me paying for your dams for, to sell to recreational purposes. And that's what it's all about. And I'm really alarmed and concerned, I am aware that your family farm that's been in your family for an awful long time is at the center of this project. And I, we have had people come to us in the past, we've actually taken their homes. I remember a homeowner coming up here that lived someplace out, I guess it's Flanagan now, and we took a whole subdivision for their houses. We had to reroute roads. I went up to Washington County and got really no interest from anybody, but we had, at great expense, I don't remember, I don't know who paid for it, I suppose, well, obviously the taxpayers, we closed, tore down some bridges and tore down a highway and rerouted everything so that these development people, God bless them, could make a dime, a little bit more than a dime on selling these lots. So anyway, I am very supportive of your cause. Sean has done a terrific job of presenting these items, and you have done a terrific job as well in focusing on what the issue is, and I intend to pursue it on your behalf if I can get the rest of the board as excited as I am. I just think it's something we need to, we need to do, we need to have information to make a decision whether or not we should support what's happening.
To, to kind of add to your point on that, the corps actually, they kind of, the way I understand it is they basically took the original, like seventies, eighties study, took all those dams and studied them as of today without doing much elaboration and work on them. And from a purely cost-beneficial standpoint for flood control only, they were only able to prove the one dam, which is Dam Site Ten, and barely Dam Site Nineteen. They're going to try to, you know, tweak it to get it so it's there, but, you know, we can't quite figure out why Dam Site Ten, being, building Dam Site Ten is basically going to save Exarban, is what the report says.
That's what's so bothersome as well, you know, because as mayor, we, I dealt with the problem at Eighty-Fourth and, and whatever it is, the interstate, that is a very heavily flood-prone area. The solution is not to build a dam far north and contain water that is probably going to breach sometime if there's a real big rain. The, the solution is not to build in Exarban. What the hell are we allowed to be built if it's, if it's going to be underwater? I mean, that's just, you know, it's outrageous. It's totally incompetent to say, "Okay, well, we're going to do all these things and it's jammed into Exarban, and now we're saying, now we got to do something to keep it from flooding." Well, you did the wrong thing. You should have put Exarban up on the hill to the west instead of where it is. You should have put that development there. So anyway, I, I really, I'm very upset about these things because it costs an awful lot of money and it's, people are not being honest in their presentations, sorry. That's how I feel.
Quite all right.
You're being honest in yours.
Are there other people who are going to speak on this?
I believe so, I've asked, I'm trying to keep this relatively short, but yes, there are.
I'll, I'll let them speak first.
I appreciate that. All right, thank you. Commissioner Borgerson?
All right.
All right. Fine, fine. Yeah, I've asked if the neighbors, if they would kind of give us a little bit of background first on what we're talking about, and then Dr. Schultz, if he can get into a little more specifics of exactly what information we should be requesting from the Corps of Engineers.
Yes, my name is Tyler Moore, I'm a lifetime resident of, of Douglas County. I'm a farmer and we're kind of in the middle where, where it's coming. I'm concerned about the study that the corps is doing. For those of you who aren't familiar with the area, it's a, a mix of acreage owners and agriculture. This dam would probably displace, I'm not sure of the number, but I think between five and ten families. I think there's as many as seven parcels of property that have been in the same family for over a hundred years that would be affected by this particular project. I guess our family has probably been one of the biggest supporters of the NRD over the years. We have a real commitment to conservation, and we've worked with the NRD doing a lot of conservation projects to actually slow the water and the runoff from our fields, which does everybody good. When we really got concerned some time ago, the NRD told us that their main priority was building dams for developers, and that if we did not take what a developer offered us for our property, that they would not only condemn us, but other, they made it very clear that other agent, government agencies would do things to cause us all kinds of problems in their words. And we're very thankful that the Douglas County Board has not been one of those. Since then, we've tried to pay as much attention as we can to what the NRD is doing. I mean, we try to get information, but they've made it difficult, they've withheld information from us, and they've passed on misinformation to the public. Now that the NRD is partnering with the corps, we're finding it very difficult to get information from them. We request, and they do everything they can to, you know, prolong it and not give it. You know, especially on the, the particulars of this feasibility study. I've, I've seen where it's been reported that the corps, corps engineers in the past, it's been reported that they've used, they call it, the nice thing, way to call it is creative economic analysis in order to justify projects they want to do. And I mean, it's been, you know, reported, I think, in the Washington Post, I'm not sure. But we're already seeing some questionable data used to determine the feasibility of this project and the hydrological need. And, you know, it's, sometimes it's not what you know that bothers you as much as what you don't know. So we would appreciate the board's help to help us attain detailed data and methods involved in this study. And, and I, I really appreciate some of the things Mr. Boyle said. The, the biggest problem with building these dams, they create a false sense of security.
Right.
I mean, I've heard from landowners in Sarpy County that's, that are, developers are telling them, they can develop their land if they get this dam in. I mean, we're talking about property that's on the, the floodplain bottom, that's probably fifteen to twenty miles away from this particular dam. This particular dam, the, the area that it covers is about one percent of the watershed, and I would strongly argue that the runoff would be quite a bit less because of the conservation, you know, things we've done in the past. But, I mean, everybody's aware that we had this massive flood damage last year, but nobody stops to think that the cause of a lot of the flood damage was the breach of the levees. And, and it's been, been very well-known for a long time that the NRD has not done a good job of maintaining them. And I've actually heard people that say they, that, you know, do the mowing and stuff on the dams, that there's, there's problems that, you know, they don't address when they should. So, I mean, it's something that everybody should be concerned about. I mean, we, we, we have tried to talk with them about building structures, particularly dry dams, that would be, you know, flood control structures, that there wouldn't be a large reservoir, that would allow people, you know, to stay and do their business, that wouldn't displace anybody. But, I mean, they just, their claim is, whatever they do, they're still going to take the real estate. So, I mean, and I do appreciate the board's support, you know, in the past, and, and we would appreciate it if you could help us try to get, you know, the information so we know exactly what's going into this study and what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
We, of course, are not the, the decision-makers on this, although this does overlap into our world when we start talking about coming over county roads. I've asked Dan Kudlec for some feedback on, on the impact of, of all of that. Yeah, we don't get to say yea or nay on the dams, but, but we do.
And, and just, just to expand a little bit, what's going on, there's a three-million-dollar study that the corps has got funding to do for, for, it's several projects, but they're focusing on this particular dam on us. And, and it's actually been, as far as the corps is concerned, historically, it's been the, the least feasible and the least needed and the least wanted dam. Now, all of a sudden, it's, you know, the main one for some reason. But, but it's a three-million-dollar study, and the way I understand it, I could be wrong, that the NRD has to partner with them to be able to construct it, but they're doing the study first. And I'm not a, you know, I'm not a engineer- And I'm not a, you know, I'm not a engineer or anything, but the way it looks to me, the studying's being kind of, I've seen some of the data that went in, and I think it's totally incorrect, especially on the hydrology of it. And it's looked like it's, the data's being made to make the, it looks to me like the outcome of the study was decided first before they put the data in. But that's just my opinion.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Anybody else want to be sharing with us this morning a little more background, or I think we've got an understanding of what's going on here, and so I would ask at this point if Dr. Schultz. Years ago, we contracted with Dr. Stephen Schultz from UNO to help us do, he's an expert on what's property worth around a lake. And, and when the NRD did the dam site out of Bennington, the partnership that we were at that time a partner in said, no, we don't have money to look at the economic analysis. And the county board then came forward and contacted with Dr. Schultz. He did a great job from my perspective, and it's good to, good to see you again, Doctor. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you, Claire. My name is Steve Schultz. I'm a professor of real estate and land use economics at the University of Nebraska at Omaha. And my research specialty over the last 20 years has been the analysis of flood control projects. Specifically, the last few years I've been working with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers out of Washington to try and improve their feasibility studies. These same type of feasibility studies that are being now done in Omaha. And they actually gave me full access to all of their data, their secret data. The Corps is sort of an opaque agency. They're not completely blocking off the public. Obviously, they like to include the public in decision-making, in the sense that they have them present at the public meetings, at the public presentations, and give comments, stuff like that. But they're a very difficult agency to actually get their raw data information and to find out what exactly they're doing. But I was fortunate to get funding from the Corps, and they allowed me to look at many of their projects around the country, mostly in the Midwest, including the Fargo-Moorhead diversion project and several others around the country. And the goal of the Corps in funding me was to improve the process. So there are people at the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers that don't want to waste federal money, that want to have feasible projects, and they are trying to improve the process. And real briefly, the study that I did almost 12 years ago that was funded by this board, that was primarily to look at the limitations and advantages of water resources in Douglas County. And the three things, the three conclusions from that study was that at the time, the NRD was giving developers the ability to build alongside these dams and reservoirs for, I think, $500 a lot. And we were able to quantify the fact that they were making, say, $25,000 to $50,000 by being able to build. And possibly because of that study or other reasons, since then, the NRD has changed their policy, and now they're building park land around the lakes and reservoirs. So if you look at Flanagan and you look at Walnut Creek, they're completely different. They don't have homes right up against the lake. They're putting the public first. That was one conclusion from that study. Another conclusion from the study was that there was a lot less property in the floodplain than people were stating. We focused on that study on residential, not commercial. But I think we demonstrated quite clearly that it would be quite a bit cheaper just to pay the floodplain, or the flood insurance premiums of the homeowners rather than these projects. And then the third aspect of that study was to demonstrate that property owners, buyers and sellers of houses, mostly in West Omaha, put a high dollar value, positive value, on low-impact development. So when there was open space that these people are promoting as an alternative to dams, buyers would pay a premium for that. And I thought it was a successful study, it was 12 years ago, but some of those issues are still relevant today. Now, I support this resolution to, for Douglas County to request for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to provide additional data and information. And in large part, this is due to my experience, I know what goes into these studies, and I have some concerns with the study. So the main benefit from these flood control projects is potential damage to structures, both residential and commercial structures. And to do that, you don't just look at the property value, you actually have to look at what it would cost to reconstruct those if they are flooded. So key information is, what's the elevation of the property? Has it been flood-proofed already? So for example, these Exarben properties, which is down the block from where my office is, are technically in the floodplain, but before they were built for their commercial insurance, they had to raise them to higher elevation. So even though they're technically in the floodplain, they've been raised, and they've had extensive floodproofing. In other words, they don't put the heating and cooling systems on the first floor, and they have all kinds of ways to avoid potential flood damage. And so to get the value of those, the potential damage of those, you have to really account for their actual elevation and their floodproofing potential. And also, what's the cost of rebuilding them? So the main data set to analyze is the structural inventory. And that's where they looked at some 4,000 properties, and they gave them an elevation point, and they also give them the cost of rebuilding. And that was a database that I requested from the Corps to actually look at in an attempt to help them improve their study, to make it a better study. And I told them, I said, this is my area of expertise. The Corps has given me, opened the vault for me, and given me access to the data and analyses how they did these studies. And they said, no, you have to file a Freedom of Information Act request. My opinion is that Douglas County is an interested stakeholder here for a variety of reasons. The majority of the taxpayers funding these projects live in Douglas County, although the money goes to the NRD. And also, long-term, there are many implications from these dam projects. Now, I guess I want to leave you with one last thing today, is that sometimes local governments go, don't protest, or they go along and support these projects even though they're not economically feasible. And by the way, this project here is marginally feasible. The initial cost benefit ratios were one to two. For every dollar they spend, they get $2 back. I think those are inflated because of the structural inventory values are probably inflated. But sometimes you get these projects that are marginal, but local governments in multi-jurisdictions still support them, or they don't actually oppose them. But the problem is, these projects tend to grow and get bigger and bigger over time. So if you look at the example of Fargo-Moorhead, six hours north of here, they had a project that started 10 years ago, and it was proposed to be a $100 million project to divert the Red River around Fargo-Moorhead. And Fargo-Moorhead has serious flood issues compared to Omaha. And there were some people who said, well, the cost benefit ratios here aren't really that good, it's like one to two, sort of like the initial ones here for Omaha. But people pushed it through and didn't oppose it, in part because they said, well, most of the money is going to come from the federal government. In other words, 75% from the federal government, we only have to pay 25%. So even though it's not economically feasible, we'll still support it because it'll add a lot of jobs to our economy, and it's worth it. But that's dangerous. These projects tend to get larger. Right now, that $100 million project in Fargo-Moorhead, its current price is $800 million. And they only have 400,000 people that live in Fargo-Moorhead. You look at the price per person, it's very expensive. And it's still being fought, there's still lawsuits involved. Also, another thing to look at, it's better to identify a project as not being economically feasible and propose something else that is. Think outside the box. So maybe we're not going to get $1,000, $500 million from the U.S. Army Corps to build these dams now, but maybe in the future, something related to stormwater management, low-impact development, something like they did in Denver, Cherry Creek area, or Platte River, where the Corps did environmentally friendly, non-structural flood control projects. Maybe down the pipeline, in coming years, that kind of project could be proposed. And also, I know that Douglas County Board doesn't have a seat at the table, like the NRD and the Corps in this particular project. But my experience is that over time, with the projects I've noticed, you need strong support from your federal senators and congressmen to get these Corps projects funded. So down the line, if City of Omaha and Douglas County thinks that this is not a feasible project, not in the interest of taxpayers, they can let their senators and congressmen know that. And it's very unlikely for a project that's borderline feasible, and there's large opposition to it for legitimate reasons, that the Corps would fund it. So I'm going to close my comments, and I guess I'll just summarize one last thing, is that I'm not pro-dam or anti-dam. I'm pro-economic feasibility. I want studies done properly, and I don't want taxpayer money wasted. That's my own personal perspective on these things.
Very good. Very good. Appreciate that, Dr. Schultz. Questions, comments?
Can I ask, do you have a copy of your remarks? And if not, we'll ask the county, I'm going to ask the county clerk to do a, to transcribe your remarks so that we can see them. They're extremely valuable.
Okay. I don't have a copy of your remarks, but one thing I do have that I'm willing to share with the Board is, I make public comments to the Corps. By January 3rd, they required them. I can send you a copy of those.
Oh, that'd be great.
And that, I summarize some of these issues, exactly what I think they should provide to the public. And by the way, the resolution that's before you now, I support all of those data items. That's the majority of the key data that's needed. One last thing I should say that I forgot to mention is, there's something called the Information Quality Act, or the Data Quality Act. This is a new federal policy, this passed a couple of years ago, where they're trying to get the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and other federal agencies to make the data information they use in decision-making in the public realm. Because there are many individuals, university researchers, maybe government employees working for counties and cities, who have some knowledge and expertise about these projects that could help and contribute to them if they had access to the data. So if a Freedom of Information Act request to get this required data to shed light on this project is not forthcoming, there is a possibility to file lawsuits that saying that the Corps is violating the Information Quality Act.
Interesting. Thank you. Commissioner Boyle.
Would it make, I don't know if we have, we don't have the jurisdiction, but what does that matter? I wanted to ask if, do you think we should, do you think that we should offer an alternative? I mean, if this is a, if Exarben's in danger of being up to, you know, 18 feet of water or whatever it is they're projecting, is there some way we could, do you think it'd make any sense for us to formally ask the NRD to, what about an alternative? You know, doing something to the, whatever the creeks are that pass through this property and further on down and further up and all that sort of thing? I mean, it seems to me that'd be much more economically feasible to do something like that, that would be much more manageable. Because, you know, the questions that are asked too here, and I remember this, I don't know how many times that dams, I don't know which ones they are, but have to be, the silt gets so bad and all that sort of thing, and then you get these mussels in there and you have to drain all the water, I mean, these huge maintenance expenses are. But it seems like there, you know, maybe if we could come up with an alternative that made some sense and preserved these farm, this farmland, I mean, I just think this is so valuable for us to try to maintain that farmland. We need it. And we have people who are making their livings off this land, and we ought to find an alternative that makes sense. Do you think we should even try?
Yes, I happened before this meeting to talk with Kent Holmes, your environmental specialist, and we talked about some different ideas, thinking outside the box, dealing with stormwater, infrastructure, City of Omaha. I was a little disappointed that the City of Omaha, Douglas County, and other interested persons with technical expertise, to my knowledge, did not make any public comments to the Corps yet about thinking outside the box and trying other alternatives. Now, there's one option is, the Corps may, especially if there's other concerns and problems with their initial feasibility study, may open up the public comment period. But I would encourage the county and City of Omaha to be a little bit more proactive in looking at some of these other alternatives, because it seems like they don't have a lot of relationships right now with the NRD. I think the NRD is kind of doing their own thing, working very closely with Sarpy County, but not so much with Omaha and Douglas County. And Omaha, City of Omaha and Douglas County are the people who are primarily going to be funding this project, because 1.7% of my tax bill in Douglas County goes to the NRD.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, one more, I'm sorry, things keep coming up. Who do you think can tell us about these alternatives? We have a really talented environmental services director, but very talented, but if you could tell us, name some of these organizations that might be able to tell us what we could do instead of this development for houses or whatever it is.
Right. Well, obviously Kent Holmes, I just mentioned, I don't want to put him in the hot seat, I'm sure he has a full plate of things to do. But obviously, the City of Omaha...
He does, but this really is kind of his area of education and background.
Right, 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 right. And so obviously, the City of Omaha, Public Works, Infrastructure, people have a vested interest in what's happening. Metropolitan Utility District to some extent as well. Although, as Kent just mentioned to me, it's, MUD collects the money, but it's really the City of Omaha who owns the city sewers and infrastructure. And obviously, the Douglas County Planning Department, I think, may have an interest. So maybe make the feasibility study from the Corps that's currently on their website and available to those agencies, and ask if they have any comments or suggestions. And my impression is that this study, especially this $3 million study, is going to have to be extended. It's not going to be wrapped up within the next six months and rubber-stamped and sent to Congress for funding. I think that, especially if we get additional data information and then we can work with the Corps, that this study might take a different direction.
Very good.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Claire.
Commissioner Craft.
First, somebody else came in, I don't know if he wanted to speak on the subject or...
He's here for something else.
Okay, good. Thank you. I have a number of issues. First, Mr. Chair, we're going to vote on this resolution today, correct?
Correct.
Can we include with that resolution that we write a letter to the Corps supporting opposition if we oppose it?
I'm fine with that, but I think that'd be better if it were put on a future agenda. The only thing on today's agenda is requesting information from the Corps.
May we do that then? Put this one, after we get that information, put that on?
Fine.
Unless they delay that information so long? Okay. UNO is doing some construction in the floodplain, it looks like, near the, near the...
College of Business?
Baxter Arena.
Oh, Baxter, okay.
What are they building there?
I'm not familiar with, oh, I know we're building in addition to our building at the College of Business on Pine and 67th, we're building in a new wing on the College of Business. The Baxter, I'm not really sure if, I haven't been down there recently, but I know that they're talking about the sports bubble possibly being rebuilt. I'm not sure if it's that you're talking about.
Because I know they're doing a lot of earthwork, and if they're building above the floodplain, that pushes the floodwater someplace else.
Sure.
Which, in this case, could be upstream, would be upstream. So, yeah, I have a lot of concerns. I don't trust the NRD. I've learned not to trust them. I don't trust the Corps of Engineers, as do many people right now. I do believe this money would be better spent on the levees.
Right.
And other issues. You know, we, I'm a firm believer in property rights, even though I know there's going to be a couple of people who don't think I am because of recent events. But when the City of Omaha, when I was a councilperson, wanted to do condemnations, I voted against them. I fought hard, because it wasn't for public necessity. And I don't know that this is for public necessity or public entertainment. It looks like, you know, I, I'm thinking of the flood in Iowa City. Do you know what caused that? Was that a levee or was that a dam?
That was related to levees, and it was an extreme weather event.
Okay. And Cedar Rapids?
Same thing.
Okay. And Burlington, Iowa?
I'm not familiar with that.
Okay. But, you know, we, as, as, somebody said we get a false sense of security. I don't quite remember who wrote, said that, but that's, you did? Okay.
But it was good anyway.
Okay, Mike's going to take credit for that. But, you know, these, these people who own this land have property rights.
Right.
Yep.
And in my opinion, it's not for government necessity. Okay, yes, and I'm going to reiterate, the money can be better spent on the levees that have failed and need to be reinforced. And I'm done. Thank you.
The best new term I heard today is creative economic analysis. I had to write that one down. That, that could really come in handy sometime, I'm sure of it. Further discussion? Commissioner Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for being here. If there's any other items that you think we should amend onto this resolution, please don't hesitate to speak up before we take the vote on this.
Or even after. I mean, we can, if, if we missed something, and you realize that, we'll come back at our next meeting to address it.
Sure.
My impression is that the current resolution is adequate.
Okay. I also want to thank Mr. Moore for bringing up the levee system. After our event we had of flooding in Douglas County last March, I held a town hall meeting out in Bally with all of the players. And there were two big issues that came up, and that was a study on our levee system and our drainage system here in Douglas County, especially out in that area. When folks were talking about building and elevating, elevating the dirt, and that changes the direction of the water flow. And sometimes they were big projects, and sometimes they're just personal, within the property owners doing something on their property that changes it. So I actually think if there's anything additional that we could do, I would love to have an additional meeting, asking the Corps of Engineers and asking the NRD folks to come and talk to us about how do we work together to try to get those federal dollars to do a levee system study and a drainage system study. We can, in Douglas County, go ahead and fix all the wrongs that we've done, but if the We can, in Douglas County, go ahead and fix all the wrongs that we've done, but if the levee systems beyond us aren't looked at and fixed, we're going to still be in trouble, especially when you have an event like we did in March where we had the flooding, we had the blizzard, I mean, and it was, it was a 500-year versus 100-year event. We are in a position now where I'm a little nervous about this spring, same thing happening again here in Douglas County. So, anyway, if you have thoughts, I would love to have a sit-down meeting with those folks again to talk about trying to get our federal representatives to get us money to do those two things. It really has to be, levee systems should be the state of Nebraska, to be honest with you, but do the levee system study and the drainage system study within the Douglas County area. So, Mr. Chair, I don't know who or why, or who we should go ahead and try to coordinate that with, but I think it's very appropriate timing because of all of this, that we have that meeting again with them.
This dam is very much being driven by the Corps. I sat with Jim Thompson at the meeting out at UNO, I mean, and they said, this isn't us, you know, but I think they're the silent partner that's happy to step in when the time is right.
Right.
So, sounds good.
Technically, the NRD is the official partner, or the local, local partner. And the way these studies work is for the, for these feasibility studies, it's paid 50-50.
All right.
Okay, and then when there's an actual project approved, it's about 75% federal government, 25% local.
Okay, very good. Appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
We can just change the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
We could change, thank you, we could change the direction of the project.
Potentially, you could, but I don't, I don't think officially, you're not, the NRD is the partner. I think the NRD, but, but the Corps, people are trying to sometimes bash them and think that they're trying to do things illegally, et cetera, or, or unethically. My overall impression is that the Corps is a, is a good institution. And in fact, in years past, I was a huge proponent of the NRD to start working with the Corps of Engineers for these feasibility studies. And in fact, I was quoted in the Omaha World Herald, said, well, hallelujah, this is great. Finally, we're going to have objective analyses of this project, and it probably will indicate that they're not feasible, whereas in the past, the Corps, NRD promoted many infeasible dam projects. So, I think that the Corps of Engineers needs to be worked with and engaged with, just to look at all different alternatives, and just to make sure they're doing their numbers right. I don't think they're on purpose misleading people, but I think that they may be going in the wrong path.
Right, right. And I think that's, the timing is great for us to try to change that.
Very good. Thank you.
I do, too. Good alternative.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution before us today?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Borgson. There are no further questions or comments. Could we please vote on it?
Yes.
I can slight mark, he doesn't care.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. I believe that's the last public action that we have today. On our agenda, it said we were going to try to take a tour of the jail, but we're going to postpone that with Mr. Myers being out of town and for a variety of reasons. We will reschedule that for another time. I would like to, before we go into executive session, take this opportunity to reintroduce a familiar face back here, Kim Havakati, who used to sit back here many years ago, and anyhow, welcome back. It is so good to have you back with us, Kim. I'm excited to see how this is going to, very good, very good. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion for...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The item I spoke to you about earlier, the BOE item we have to readdress.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, okay, there was a typo on one BOE item that we approved this morning, and it would be best if we came back in and corrected it today. Therefore, I would entertain a motion to declare an emergency. So, this is simply to declare an emergency so that we can reopen as Board of Equalization and try to clarify one error that was made. So, let's vote first on the declaration of an emergency. I need a lot of reminders as we go along on these things.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Motion to re...
Motion passes seven, zero.
Motion to reconvene as the Board of Equalization.
Fine. Okay.
Give us one moment here.
And, and for that, I think we should probably have the roll call as well.
Yes, we'll rate a vote if, on the...
All right, fine.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Okay, what did we screw up? What was wrong?
Well, you, on item F, on the resolution, so if anyone has the resolution in front of them, two-thirds of the way down the page, CAC 52080, it has the wrong account number for Heartland Mobility. It should say number 303603, and it has the wrong number, so we just wanted to change that on the resolution to reflect the right account number.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion to that effect?
Second.
And does that include adjournment?
Yes.
As a BOE? Okay, could we please vote on that?
One moment, please. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Dan.
Sure.
Commissioner Boyle.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, sorry. Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I'd like to ask our man who runs our system here of giving notices and so forth, I've asked him to put the phone number on of the organization that deals with people who are trapped in trafficking.
Oh.
And if you know of anything, the number's on our, should be on our screen, but if you know of anyone who is involved or trapped, or a young lady, usually, usually women, who are being forced to do things they don't want to do, there's the phone number. And keep track of it and watch it. Surprisingly, Omaha is a kind of a center for this in a lot of ways, so watch out, we have a lot of Indian women, Native Americans who are trapped in this, there's a lot of them missing.
Yes.
And so, anyway, keep your eye on that and call if you know of someone who's trapped.
Thank you. Appreciate that, appreciate that, Mike.
Thanks.
We do have need for an executive session for purposes of negotiations and litigation. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of a second to go into executive session to discuss negotiations and litigation, questions or comments. Could we please vote? Thank you. And again, this is for negotiations and litigation only.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Motion that we reconvene in the hearing.
We don't need to vote, huh?
Oh.
We don't need to vote.
Yeah, yeah, we don't need to vote on this. Well, reconvening we do.
Who does this belong to?
Me, I'm coming to either one of them.
I'd ask Teresa. I'm not an attorney. Do they have to vote?
Yes.
I can declare it a term, but how about reconvening in a term?
I think we need to vote.
On that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Alan, correct me if I'm wrong, we've always done it that way in the past. Yeah, and I think they need to reconvene.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner, are you a yes? Okay, perfect. Motion passes all commissioners present voting yes.
All right. Can't wait to grab my cookies, so excited.
I know.
I'm kidding.
Oh, you too, see you later.
I do have, oh, what's that?